Had to warm up.
Okay, we've got the consent agenda. Everybody see that?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. We have several public meetings tonight. These public meetings will be held in accordance with Natrona County regulations, Wyoming State statute, and any other applicable rules. Anyone wishing to speak on these different items may come to the lectern and give your full name and address for the record. The first one that we have is CUP 20-7. Is there a report?
Let's table it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, that CUP has been recommended to be tabled to a date further. They're still working on some further drainage design for us. That's off of Douglas Road, and we hope to get that to you in the next thirty to sixty days.
Okay, we'll stay right there, because the next one is a zone change 20-2.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, we have ZC 20-2. It's a request for zone change, an application by Taylor Cook and Kay Page to change the zoning district classification of forty-three acres from RAM, ranching agricultural mining to urban agricultural UA. Location and zoning, the parcel is located roughly one-half mile west of Poison Spider School and south of Poison Spider Road. So again, we're west of town, and we are half-mile west of the school and south of Poison Spider Road. The parcel is more commonly referred to as 2922 and 2942 Phillips Lane. The subject parcel and the parcels to the north, south, and the west are RAM. The parcel to the east is urban ag. So again, here's our map. We head out west of town on either zero or Poison Spider Road. We go past a twelve-mile road. We go past Poison Spider School, and you can see the subject parcels there highlighted in the red. Here's a map showing our zoning. You can see this parcel is adjacent to urban agricultural. So just there to the north, you'll see there's another green jet out that was a zone change proposed and approved. As town grows and as properties develop, the urban ag will grow out further. That's shown in our development plan, our 2016 development plan, where we had public input, and we talked about neighborhood growths and the way we, the Natrona County residents wanted to see the county grow and develop. There's been five previous applications to rezone parcels in this area. Three attempts were to change from RAM to UA. You can see the history there. There was a zone change request from RAM to SR1 in 2016. SR1 would have been a lot smaller zoning. SR1 would have been consistent to the zoning that's located behind Poison Spider School, but that was not supported by our development plan. And in 2019, a twenty-acre parcel was approved and rezoned from RAM to urban ag. Again, that is that parcel there to the north. You can see that jet out. That was what was approved in 2019. This is looking east down Pine Ridge Road. Again, we're west of Twelve Mile Road and Poison Spider. This is looking south down Phillips Lane. Our subject property is down there at the end of the road. This is looking southwest across Phillips Lane. Again, you can see this is primarily an ag-type, ag and residential-type property use. The planning commission and the board shall require that the applicant provide evidence that the proposed zone change will meet at least one of the following criteria. So we have several criteria here that the applicant could identify, and they have identified criteria one and six. That is, it is necessary to come into compliance with the Natrona County Development Plan. And six, the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide a land for the community need that was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the Natrona County Development Plan. Their responses are, there is a need for these smaller lots, particularly in this area, because of municipal water, easy access to Casper, good soil, and in some cases irrigation rights. So this entire area is covered off of thirty-three, or Pioneer Water in sewer districts, so they get municipal water out at this location. They would have septic systems in this location, but they do get municipal water. Many homeowners want smaller rural properties, and for these reasons choose the west side of Casper to locate their homes. The demand for small rural properties is strong on the west side of Casper, and it does not appear that the zoning adequately accommodates these needs. The recent subdivision on Eight Mile is proof of the high demand. There's approximately nine lots, twelve to fifteen acres in size, that sold within the first year. The newly installed water main in Phillips Lane will provide water for an additional sixty-five to one hundred and fourteen homes. Poison Spider School was recently replaced, and this allows for the school district to accommodate an increasing number of students. The zone change will not result in a spot zone, as the subject is contiguous with properties that are already zoned urban ag. The zone change does conform with the development plan. Staff's findings. The 2016 development plan for Natrona County was adopted July 5th, 2016. The recommendation for this area is to have low-density residential development within the zoning being a, or RAM and urban agricultural. Low density shall be based on a minimum of one unit per five acres. So the urban ag would allow for a ten-acre lot if they so desire. That would be one unit per ten acres. Development plan says we could go down to one unit per five, so it is in compliance with the development plan. The subject parcel and adjacent land already zoned urban ag and shall not be considered a spot zone. This request does comply with the development plan. Public comment, the development plan notified fourteen property owners within one-half mile of this proposed zone change. Adjacent neighbor letters were sent out June 29th, 2020. Staff did receive one comment in opposition to this item. There was no reason given to why they were opposed. At the planning commission, one person spoke in opposition. At their twenty, before I get into that, again, we are only talking about a zone change here. So we're talking about those seven criteria, and do they meet that criteria or not? There's a lot of conversation about future subdivisions that may or may not occur. Those are a separate subject for another meeting, another time. Our current zoning resolution or subdivision regulations would allow one dividing of this land as a simple subdivision, so it's done administratively internally with the Health Department and county surveyor review. If there was any more further subdivisions, they would have to file for a major subdivision, and then we would, again, notify the neighbors, go through planning and zoning, and ultimately come before this board. So if we get into any conversations about subdivisions, that's not what's before us tonight. What's before us tonight is a zone change, and do they meet the criteria? Proposed motion, at their August 10th, 2020 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of this agenda item, including findings of fact by the Board of County Commissioners. Without I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Is there any questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gutierrez, this property hasn't been previously subdivided, then?
There was, if you see on the application here, there's a smaller L shape, if you will, and then the larger chunk. That was previously done through a, what the applicant believed to be a family exemption. It did not meet our criteria of a family exemption and was deemed an illegal subdivision. So that had been done. If they go through this, they would be correcting that situation and removing that label off of that property. So that's the one division that I'm aware of that has been done before.
Did that answer that?
Well, and we're, if we can only subdivide once, and it's already been subdivided once...
So they, we would, if this is passed, the idea is to correct that, and that would be their simple subdivision. And so then any future subdivision of that would require a major subdivision, and so then they would come before planning and zoning and the Board of County Commissioners for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Great, thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Thank you, Commissioners. I am Keith Nakbar, Attorney at Law, 123 West First Street, Suite 205, Casper, Wyoming, 82601. Commissioners, I am here representing the applicants Kay Page and Taylor Cook, who are a grandmother and grandson, who are requesting the zone amendment. We're asking, excuse me, we're asking for approval of the zone change. As Mr. Gutierrez suggested, this original configuration of property was done under what at the time was thought to be a, an approved family subdivision exception to the subdivision rules. That was the current, as I understand it, that was the current thought process of Gene Wallace, who was a former planner some years ago, I believe it was back in 2012. This zone amendment that is requested is really making the zoning match the configuration of the subdivision in the area. It's really making the zoning match what we have out in this subdivision. There are many lots in this area that do not comply with the RAM zoning, and this is RAM zoning only because the line was drawn there. I can discern no other good reason why this particular subdivision was put into the RAM zoning district. If you look at the lots in the area, I went through and identified the lots that I believe are less than thirty-five acres, and that would include Harvey Glow, Wymer, which I believe is now Carpenter. Glow is twenty acres, also in RAM, and I can identify where these are. I'll lift my pointer. Oh, there we go, sorry. Don't mean to blind anyone. Oh, it won't work.
It doesn't work.
It does, okay. All right, well, good enough. I can try to show you on this. The subject parcel is right here. Glow is twenty acres. What used to be Wymer, and now I believe is Carpenter, is twenty-six point seven-two acres. Gaffari, which is, I believe, up the road here, I'm not su, oh, here's Gaffari, that's twenty-five acres. There's also Tubbs, Milne, Rowe, Robinette, Carpenter, and what was Muncell, all, I believe, within the RAM district, zoning district, but it is not, those are not lots that are thirty-five acres. Clearly, what we see is a demand for this kind of parcel, the ten-acre parcel, in the west, west of Casper area. The development plan anticipates that. There was a subdivision, as Mr. Gutierrez mentioned, there was a subdivision out on Eight Mile Road. All of those lots sold very quickly. There is adequate water. If you see in your packet, there's a letter from one of the engineers that designed the water system. The water system has the ability for a hundred and fourteen more three-quarter inch taps or sixty-five more, sixty-five additional one-inch taps in that area. That's the Poison Spider Water District. To my knowledge, zero of those have been used up to this point. The parcel is adjacent to, just to the west of other UA zoning, and, as I said, this really makes the zoning match what we find out on the ground out there. The development plan supports the proposal. This would result in, at worst, low-density residential development, and it would certainly allow the landowners, my clients, Taylor Cook and Kay Page, to use their property to its maximum potential, consistent with the development plan. These other parcels that are not consistent with the RAM zoning were just grandfathered in. That's the only reason they exist in their current state. So with that, we would ask you, and I should say, the planning commission was in favor of this. I believe the vote was unanimous in favor of the zone amendment, and so we would ask you to adopt the recommendation of the zoning commission, and the planning commission, I should say, to approve the requested zone change. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions? I don't see any. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Come on up.
Are we allowed without the mask, or?
Yes. Full name and address.
Curtis Kimkey Lee, 2950 Phillips Lane. I'm the UA that's east of this whole program here, the discussion today. And so I don't have any other neighbors. So in response to initial letter about comments concerning the whole issue, a couple of points here. We're not here to decide about RAM or not. The only issue is in front of us, the RAM to UA. Now, this property has been already denied many times in the past for UA. And why are we, that was, last one was seven years ago. So my question today is, why are we still trying to get a UA program here? Nothing has changed. Now, to start the whole process here, the two residents there are the Cook family. Jerry Cook owned the whole area, when he came into the area about 2006, 2007, he was the irrigator, the hundred and fifty acres. So he took over that property, and somewhere along the line, he decided to make those two properties present there, Taylor, Cook, and Cage, Kay Page. Of course, that, at the time, was RAM area, and you're not supposed to have less than thirty-five acres. Okay, you have forty-three. But in the prior covenants, up until then, to 1983 until present, let's see how this works here, they're only allowed one single-family resident per acre, thirty-five acres minimum. So why did they get two residents there? So that was illegal use of those properties in the first place. Yes, maybe they're trying to correct it now, but it still was an illegal placement. Mr. Cook did place those two homes there, right next to concrete irrigation pipes that I used all the time. And so he went ahead and put those two properties there. So I think the existence of two properties there should not be a deciding factor here. It was done illegally in the first place. Now, if it was UA, and they bought that, and still only allows at least the single resident, family residence, in a covenant that had been there since fifty, nineteen-fifties or so. So that's one concern. Now, I'll come back to this in a minute here. I have my similarly neighbor in the area, I'm going to use the whole time here. Yes, the planning commission, it was nineteen, 2016, that certainly is before all these issues about COVID-19, the economy, et cetera, et cetera. So I think the economic situation has changed now. I don't know if we still need smaller residents yet, but yes, there are other properties still on, they're trying to sell in the area. So I don't think there's a real need, or at least we need to postpone this decision and try to make this UA, because the whole situation's changed since 2016. As one of the neighbors there, the whole issue is driven by Mr. Jerry Cook. And my issue is that every neighbor has a poor relationship with him. Every neighbor. Sometime abrasive, sometimes physical, there's been too many issues. One neighbor to him has argued with him many times, and even last commission meeting, they were arguing outside, and the deputy had to come in and ask him not to step outside. That's one issue. There's still a constant issue between that neighbor. The next neighbor had a lot of issues of privacy that were with Cook's residence there. They decided to move. And the new neighbors there, I was part of the party that we had, building new taller fences for privacy. And that's an issue with the Cook, Mr. the Cook family, anyway. Three of the neighbors right now do not want to be involved with these discussions, because they're concerned about reprisals and repercussions from that. So I know three of them are not. No, actually, four, since the other one did not come in today. But the four of them, they don't want to deal with this whole issue of what's going on with the properties here. Harv Glow would have been here, but I don't see him here, so he's at issues with, ad nauseam with the Cook. All of the residents that have been there longer, I've been a resident there for twenty-six years. Glow was before me, Sid, everyone there, and all the properties have been subdivided by marriage or divorce, et cetera, et cetera. So yes, the issue of these smaller properties there is correct, but for various reasons, not because of intent to buy property. So currently, we still have issues with Glow. Personally, I have a lot of issues too, even with Taylor and Kay. There was an issue many years ago, and this is part of lawsuits that have been going on in the past with the Cook. He put a plate in front of my water, irrigation water, and now he has a temporary, now permanent injunction that he's not allowed to do that. But I've been working my field, doing the irrigation, and I've been videotaped, I've been spied on, and every time I go up to check my water, I have to have someone else come with me. It's not a good situation for a whole family. Anyway, so I can't hear a comment. But anyway, so there's an issue, all of them, all the neighbors here are concerned about what's going to happen, what's going to happen here. He's already took in twenty acres that became UA, originally tried to turn that into a mobile home, ten to twelve mobile homes. We didn't know about that until we got a standalone apartment box for mail, thirteen spots. Then we checked, and it turns out he had put in septic, he's put in electrical and water to these two-acre lots in that twenty-acre system. We had to go to court with all that, and then the court did agree that he's not allowed to put that mobile home. So we had to change the whole configuration of that. The same thing applies. When he put those two homes there, we didn't know what they were for. We didn't, nobody knew why he was doing that. Certainly then Kay Page, he finally built them too close to the irrigation water and everything, and Kay's his mother, I assume, mother, mother-in-law, I don't know, they're part of the Cook family, and of course, his son, Taylor. So they bought, they, when it moved into those homes illegally, because it's still, that was still RAM, still with thirty-five acres minimum, only single residents. So now we're faced with two, we're still there. The problem with making this decision, there's no follow, there's no oversight, if you will. So they put those two homes there. Now, they're trying to make it UA, even though illegally, there was not supposed to be there in the first place. And so yes, for my personal, it's been an issue all the time. I'm not sure, we don't know what they're going to do. Apparently, Taylor's supposed to build something there, but he can't do it because it's too small acreage, and they're not farmers, they're not the ranchers. And that, my property is exactly all east of this whole property, and my concern, and all the neighbors' concern, is that this might turn into a multiple division. If you're allowing less than one residence per five acres, if they divide that forty acres roughly, give three to Taylor for his purpose, then we're talking about five into forty and eight homes. And that road there is a single dirt road, no lights. I'm the one who has to maintain it during the snow. There's no upgrade to that road, and it will not handle more traffic like that. But I don't know what their purpose are. They didn't say anything, Mr. Nakbar has not said anything, why do they want to do that? If they're putting two separate acreages there, but still in an illegal situation where they started in the first place. It shouldn't have happened in the first place, but I don't know. My concern is, yes, the taps that are put in, when they put in eight-inch water type pipe, it's up to a hundred taps off of that. There's only eight, ten residents there. So yeah, maybe they're going to do, make more homes, but as a homeowner there, I've been there twenty-six years, I worry about, we'll have more traffic, our kids can't be on the road anymore, the whole traffic, the whole situation's changed. But we don't know what they're going to do with that UA, if they're going to make it UA. If you make it UA, what's going to happen? Now, February 2013 is already denied. The whole thing was denied, same package, it was Kay Page at that time. So why are we now allowing that to happen when the commissioners at that time already had denied that? And I didn't hear any good reason why. Oh, yes, we want to have more smaller homes, we want to, more people want to move out there. Yeah, but it may not be the right time right now, because of coronavirus. So, and I want to apologize, it's a waste of time to do this. I don't think we should be here making this decision now. It's, all the neighbors, I don't know who's behind me now, but yeah, a lot of them just discussed it, they didn't want to come in for this. So I'm, I was elected. So it's not a good situation there, and I'm worried what may happen if he takes those forty-three acres, turn into more homes. I think it's not the right time, it's not the right time. So that's what I have to say. So, yes, it was the hundred and fifty acres irrigation for Hay and Alfalfa, he changed forty-three acres into that little parcel right there. It was still RAM at the time, and he still put two illegal homes there. And I, what are you going to do about it? Nothing. My concern is, and so I'm not sure what they're going to do now with, why are they trying to make it UA? And I think Mr. Nakbar's not going to say anything else. We don't know. And I think it's not the right time to make a decision on that, and all the neighbors, all our, all of them there just do not want this to happen, as we did 2013 and before. And we're not even talking about this small property that was, the twenty acres that was turned into UA. That was a lawsuit thing, and we were all, we went to court, spent all that time at court at the same time, and he was denied that. So now it's going to be two larger parcels. I don't know what they're doing now. There's one home there, the other's been turned into grasslands for animals, I think, but I don't know. So my concern is, I don't, I didn't hear any good reasons why we need to allow this to happen. We didn't know what the plans are. I have pictures of all the homes there with all these wooden blocks that are stacked up there. I don't know what they're for. And I could show, I turned those pictures into Trish last time. I don't know where they are now, but it's a mess. Oh, and he still has, 2013, he put three large areas of dumped trash in, on the road, right outside my property. One large heap of concrete blocks that are broken, two dump sites with a broken ice chest, tires, broken troughers, still there since 2013. And I haven't, they're even there now, this morning. And I don't know what he's going to do, what they're going to do with that property. I just, I'm just concerned that, why don't, do they have to change it to UA to do what they're going to do? No, they're already there, they're living there illegally. No, they're already there, they're living there illegally, so why do we need to change this to UA? So my, my recommendation, this gets denied or postponed, and I'm sure the other neighbors, if they're here, would say the same thing. We've all lived there over 20 years. And now this gentleman comes in, he's the newer, he's changed everything for the property for us.
Okay.
Okay, any questions or?
Questions? Yes. Just a minute.
Thank you.
Hey! Back in the back, if you want to have a conversation, take it out in the hall.
What's that?
If you want to have a conver, yes, you.
That's all right, the lights are on in the car, what?
Well, if you want a conversation, take it out in the hall, but be quiet while we're trying to hear the speakers, please. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Mr. Lee.
Yes.
Okay, what would be the purpose of postponing it? What would, what would the intent be? What would you hope to gain from postponing it?
I would not like them to make the same mistakes they did before. Try to turn that 20 acres into two acre mountain. We didn't know what their purposes were. When they put the two homes there, nobody knew what the purposes were. And now it's there illegally, it's stuck there. So I guess to gain more facts about what they're going to do with the property, how they're going to do this, or why do we need to change this at all? They could just, you know, there was a five acre compensation for a family. So that happened way back then, but then we end up with two residences here, and they're all in the same 43 acres on the north side of that. So why do we have to spend time doing this? They could just change it. I, again, I don't know what their purposes are. I'm just worried that they may change the whole property. If they're going to do a family rest for five acres, per five acres, as proposed in 2016, that, that puts a tremendous burden on our road, the one dirt road we have. It's a easement, and there's another family beyond that. But if you put four, eight homes right along that road, that's going to change the whole picture of the whole community. It's not benefiting us, the people who are there already. And I, again, I don't think we really know what their purposes are. Yes, in general, yes, they'd like to have smaller homes, more development, but it doesn't, they don't have to go to UA to do that. They have two homes over there already.
We can, we'll ask staff about that in a little bit.
So, yeah, I don't, I just don't want this to happen, like 2013 and before, it's been come up so many times. And the same person is trying to subdivide this some more. And certainly, if he subdivides, success subdivision, does that benefit any of the neighbors there already? Somebody comes in to your neighborhood, builds a, you know, apartment complex. Is that right? Or put in four new homes? Is that an opportunity for him, for them? I don't, but again, I don't know what their purpose is. But I'm worried that, as you had planned, that it is allowed to have one family per five acres. So it'll turn into another, you know, multi. When we came, I came here 26 years ago, that's not what I wanted. Peace and quiet, I have 40 acres right there, and I'm UA. Why would I want to make it smaller? That's not my purpose there. So I don't know what their purposes are here, so I, that's my concern. Or they're trying to correct the original reason, having two residences there, but that's not our job here to figure this out. That's why I think either postpone, deny it, or postpone it.
Yeah, I think that is part of the deal, is to get it to conform. And we'll, we'll ask in a minute. Any other questions? Anybody?
Okay.
Okay.
I can answer any more if you have any questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Harv Glow. I live at 2925 Phillips Lane, which is the property just to the north of the two red blocks there. I've been out there for 40 years, so I'm kind of the institutional memory. This area out here was originally part of a Irvine Ranch, it was broken up in the 70s. And it was, so that's why some of these properties are small, but they were all broken down, less than 20 acres was the max, or the minimum at that time. And, and so that's, that's why there's some smaller ones in here. I have one, I have 20 acres. However, in 1983, the county changed that area from Poison Spider Road down to my place, from urban ag to rural ag and mining, to keep the integrity of the area agriculture. So they changed it in 1983, otherwise I could be chopped up a lot more than it is now. And the urban ag to the east of that thumb sticking out there is a Wyoming State School section. And that section goes down 40 acre south of where it says UA on that urban ag area. 40 acre south of that is still State School Section. Otherwise, this could be, all be RAM out there. And it was, I guess, at one time. So that's kind of deceiving, that spot just in the north of me, that little thumb sticking out there, I believe that's a good case of spot zoning. So anyhow, I've been out there for 40 years, and, you know, we haven't had any trouble out there until just, you know, the last 10 years or so. And the properties in red you see there, there should be another one just to the left of it, there's a five acre tract there. So you've got three properties that don't conform with the current zoning. They're all there because of Cook or indirectly because of Cook. Cooks, let me put it that way. And, you know, there's also three Sinclair pipelines going across that property. So there's, you know, other considerations to chopping things up, you know, not for, just for that, but. And, you know, this could be resolved very easily, since, you know, it was, if they're not in compliance now, why can't the Cooks just simply add another 27 acres to these two properties and get 70 acres and have two 35s there? Be in compliance with the zoning and not have any more further effects out there? If this is gone, is changed to urban ag, you not only will have two properties there, you can have four 10 acre properties there. So you're actually rewarding this guy for not paying any attention to zoning requirements out there. And I'm not sure who is, does anybody enforce the zoning? How has this thing been allowed to happen? You know, we've brought it up before and not gotten any answers from the planning department. So, but I think this, you know, the simple solution here is just to have Cook rearrange his property there to get two 35 acre tracts there. You know, let him take the responsibility of resolving this problem, issue, whatever you want to call it. He's the reason it's that way to start with. He's the one that started breaking this stuff up without approval. And like I said, there is a third property there, it's not shown on there. And on this Phillips Lane, we've got two young families with kids, it's not like it's just, you know, a bunch of crotchety old people out there. And there's properties on the other side of Poison Spider Road that have not been able to sell. So I don't think there's that big a demand out there. And down on 12 Mile Road, which is just across this school section, you know, there's other people down there that have got lots of sale and haven't been able to sell them in years. So I think this thing is, you know, kind of a comedy of errors here. And I think you guys should, you know, try to resolve it instead of just passing the problem on to everybody else that lives out there. You know, I think one of the, you know, parts of your mission statement is that, that says you are to protect and enhance the quality of life for present and future inhabitants. Well, the only one that's getting protected and enhanced are the Cooks. The neighborhood out there is not in favor of this. You know, there's other people that can't be here tonight, and we've always, we've had other meetings in this, for other, you know, divisions out here, and we've had a little better turnout. I'm sorry more of them couldn't be here tonight. But I think the county has some responsibility here for this problem, and they should try to help Cooks resolve it without changing the current zoning. You just keep chopping this area up out there, pretty soon it's going to be like Vista West. And the people that live out there don't want that, except for one. So thank you for your time.
Okay.
You have any questions?
Any questions? Nope, thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you. No more questions. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, is there any questions? I've got a couple of questions for staff. Is part of this taking care of the illegal subdivision that was created?
That would resolve the illegal subdivision, and Planning did take an active approach in that. As soon as we were aware that was there, we sent letters to Kay Page, and we did file a notice against the property. This would resolve that because it gets our minimum lot size from 35 acres to 10 acres. So that would, would resolve that problem. Again, the problem isn't, isn't why we were here, there's a zone change criteria. Our zoning resolution spells out, get to it here again, six criteria that somebody would offer to be approved for a zone change. The applicant has given us criteria that they believe they meet number one and number six, and that was the criteria that we and Planning and zoning judged them against, was those criteria. So that was really the key topic tonight, is do they meet criteria one and six as they have proposed?
Okay, then I guess a further question then. When it was up before us several years ago, it seems to me like on the east side of that boundary line, that's UA and RAM, there was adequate water, and now we've heard that there's adequate wa, only adequate water for the east side of that, and not really for the west side. But then we heard somebody say that the west side was okay for taps tonight.
Yeah, there, I believe it was Barry Van with 602 Engineering put a letter together, and they redid the water line in Phillips Lane, and that provided for additional taps or additional growth down Phillips Lane. And we have seen multiple application. Our zoning resolution specifies you cannot apply for a zone change more than once per year if it's been denied. So you can come back, after 12 months, you can apply again.
Mr. Chadwick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So do you have any sense of why this was turned down previously?
So from what I have gathered, looking back through the notes, is there was actually, the Development Department offered one of those proposals to move that entire UA RAM line further to the west, which would have encompassed many more acres, clear over to the Bessemer Bend area. And the idea was that more folks were wanting to divide their land, they were wanting to go from 35 acres to 10. And we had a lot of public input at that point, and my recollection is at that point, it was tabled and removed, totally denied, didn't move any further.
And as a follow-up, so what, what will they be able to do with this property beyond what they can do right now?
So the allowed uses for urban ag is more of a residential component to it. And I apologize if I provided some confusion there, but the smallest lot that can be provided in urban ag is 10 acres. The development plan would allow you to go down to one per five, but again, our zoning is going to trump, are going to stop that at one per 10 acres. So things they could do, potentially, they, it could be developed into 10, down to 10 acres. There is, let me grab my list of.
Just stay on that side. She's going to bring you a deal out.
You talking to me?
Yes, stay on that side. Stay on that side.
Sir, I'm going to bring her.
She's going to bring yourself.
I just walked up there.
Okay.
You can call me out, you can speak up.
No, he'll take you out of here.
What? I know.
Okay.
That's why I walked up here, Jesus.
Sorry, Jason.
No, we're good, we're good. So it's more of a, the intent and purpose of urban ag is to provide for and protect properties of 10 acres of size and larger in the urbanized area, which are used for agricultural and residential. Then when we get to RAM, the intent and purpose of RAM is to provide and protect areas traditionally used for commercial ranching, agricultural, and mining. So, you know, that's more of their, your large-scale commercial ranching, mining, mineral extraction, where urban ag is more of a resident, has a residential component along with the agricultural. And I do stand corrected, we do have the reasons why that didn't proceed before. The first attempt in 2010 failed to proceed to BOCC, so it never made it out of Planning Commission. The second attempt in 2010 was denied by Planning Commission and failed to proceed to BOCC. The third attempt in 2012 was denied by the Board of County Commissioners. So that's a little bit of history on 2010, 2011, and 2012.
It seems to me that if I remember right, Commissioner Chadwick might too, we had an overwhelming amount of people that didn't want a whole lot of neighbors out there. And then the other one was the water, if I remember right.
And that sounds right, but the primary one, you know, since they, I believe, they, I'll say, enhanced that water system out there, there's, there's more taps available, but the, the resistance to smaller acreages, to my knowledge, hasn't changed. I know a few people besides those who are here tonight who live in that area, and they've all expressed that to me. So I've, other than the Cooks, I haven't heard anybody who wants the smaller acreages. I just haven't heard it.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but if they could split this piece into two in UA, but in order to split it any more than that, they would have to come back to us.
That's correct.
So basically, switching that to UA is not going to change anything on the ground. If they split it up any more than those two partials there, they would have to come back to Planning and then come back to us.
It would be a major subdivision at that point, if it was a typical subdivision. I don't want to cause any confusion, but if you hold the property long enough, there are some exemptions to subdivision rules through family exemption, but we're talking about like a 10-year timeframe, where state statute exempts somebody from, from our subdivision rules. But as it sits right now, yes, it would not change it.
So it wouldn't, now they might change the boundary of those two, but they can only have two?
Right.
Okay, other questions?
Yes.
Say, I do have a question. So Jason, on one of your slides, it talked about the demand being greater in the area for houses out there. So I was curious if there's any supporting documentation from agents or house data or something that's available that would support that, other than?
So that was one of the pieces of evidence the applicant provided to us to demonstrate that there was a demand. I don't have any, anything in my hand, other than there was that subdivision, it was Horsh Ranch Acres, it was at the end of Eight Mile and Poison Spider, and that did develop very fast. As soon as we had the subdivision approved here, we in the Building Department were issuing building permits, and I'd have to look in the file, but it feels like it was within 18 or 24 months, we had fully developed that subdivision.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bertollio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, right now, we have an illegal subdivision relative to what RAM allows?
Correct.
Okay, so. And, and with the two houses on there, the only way to really correct that is to go to UA, short of taking, I mean, the only other, I think one of the solutions that has been suggested is don't do anything, but it doesn't correct the problem. In looking at the, the aerial view, the entire thing is ag, other than a few little houses that are on the boundary, but it's, that whole area is one big pivot. So, I under, I can appreciate the concerns, but it would appear that it truly is mostly ag at this point. Is, am I, is this aerial picture fairly recent?
It's accurate, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other question? Does that pivot still work?
To my knowledge, yes, it does.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. Did you have a comment, sir?
I think, I think he might have had another-
Say it again?
Come on up.
Okay, this area's been in contention for, you know, 10 or 12 years out there, and it's just, you know, the Cooks just want to keep chopping it up and chopping it up. That urban ag thumb sticking out just to the north of mine, you know, that was a family emergency. They had to have a place for one of his sons to live. So there, for that, they could, you know, break it in half or 20, two 10-acre tracks. Now Grandma and the other son are having trouble with not being able to survive side by side in that thing either. So these, these family exemptions and problems that they are, you know, bringing to you, you know, are their own making. Why don't they take the responsibility of putting another 27 acres there, and, you know, you'll have two 35-acre tracks. It'll stay RAM, and you won't have the problem, like they said, of coming down the road a couple of years, wanting to make, you know, two more tracks out of there, so you have four tracks in there instead of just the two. So, you know, this has been going on now for, you know, all, quite a while, and we've been before you before on this. And, you know, it's been rejected out there three or four times also. You know, things haven't changed, you know, just that the dynamics are changed because they come up with a different story. You know, that 20-acre track north of me was going, was divided into 10, two acre tracks. Water and power were put in there before anything was done about it. But that was, you know, the covenants didn't allow that, and we were able to stop it. But now, the, you know, family exemption allowed them to break up that 20-acre tract into two 10s, you know. And then urban ag down the road, can they have five acre tracks? So then you got four, four tracks there also. You know, this is a, you know, we're a small community out there. We've got a private road. We maintain it ourselves. You know, we don't have a lot of dogs running around out there. You know, people are, you know, least considerate of each other out there. You know, you know, this dynamic changes the whole scene out there. So, like I said, you know, your mission statements for, you know, for everybody, not just one person. And like I said, that area north of me is a good example of spot zoning. And that there, and the third property right there next to these two is also only five acres, you know. This has been chopped up and chopped up, now they're trying to wiggle it around and be able to chop it up some more. You know, I just don't think you guys, you know, understand what's going on out there to allow this to happen for, you know, how these can be, you know, you, you know, if the county has zoning restrictions for a reason, you know, if you disregard them, like's being done here, you know, why reward them with more? Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Not, not for him.
Okay.
For Mr. Gold.
That's it, thanks.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This would be for Mr. Nakbar. What is the ultimate goal? I mean, what are they, what's, what's trying to be accomplished here with this change? I mean, what, what's the goal?
Sure. Well, that's a fair question. I can tell you that my clients, Taylor and, and Kay Page, they, actually Kay did not buy from Jerry Cook, point of correction, she bought from Mr. Munsell. Taylor wants to build a garage on his property. Kay needs to sell her property. Neither of those are permitted under the current problem that we have. Interestingly, I don't believe there's any desire, nor would there be any ability to further subdivide this without going through the whole process of an actual subdivision. So that fear is really not a legitimate fear. The covenants, I, I want to address a couple of issues that were brought up. The covenants don't prohibit this. If they did, we wouldn't be here. UA will not allow less than 10-acre lots. It's that simple. And this is not about neighbors or personalities. It's about resolving an issue and promoting the values or the goals that are in the development plan, allowing these folks to use their land in the way that is most beneficial, resolving the current zoning issue that exists, and adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission, who you've appointed, to look at these issues and to consider them, and to make informed decisions. So we would ask you to approve the amendment. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
This would be for Mr. Gutierrez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, why can't she sell her property? Why can't he build a garage?
So, when that illegal subdivision occurred, we put a notice of filing against the property. And what that notice says is we will no longer issue any, any permits until that is resolved. The, this being, this is going to solve the problem, so we allowed that to come forward, but we would not give a permit to build a garage. If they went to sell the property, that typically is a problem with the title agencies and clouds the title in order for financing to occur. So that, that's what prevents it from occurring. Any further development? Is that recording we put on the property?
So, the illegal subdivision was done without county approval?
That's correct, and it, and it was smaller than, when they divided that, then it created a lot less than 35 acres. So that was a violation of our zoning resolution, thus causing the letters and then ultimately the recording against the property.
Other questions?
Sorry.
Mr. Kaufman.
So just so I'm clear, so when the property was originally purchased, there was one house, and then over time, there was a second one added outside of what zoning was. So maybe somebody did that not knowing it was RAM? Is that what's created this then ultimately?
And, and I don't recall if that home, the second home was already there initially. I mean, in RAM, you can have as many homes as, as long as they're under single ownership. And I don't know when they divided that, if that then segregated that main house from the second house. I don't recall the, the details associated with that, but I've lost track of your question, I'm sorry.
I think I have too. So, so did someone actually come down to the county and subdivide the land, or just changed the deed to certain coordinates in a property to make this happen, and it was never approved through zoning?
It was, yes. So a family exemption, the, what happened was they recorded the family exemption through the clerk's office, and now we've put stopgap measures in where they come fill out an affidavit, affidavit of family exemption. And so the family exemption got filed, the assessor then created this other lot. Development then was notified of that, then we sent out letters to Kay Page saying, we cannot divide this, this property in this regard, to Kay Page and, I believe it was Jerry Cook, was the, who that other piece was sold to. Jerry Cook then sold that to Taylor at a later date. And we then recorded that notice along that way saying, timeout, this does not comply with our zoning resolution. No further building permits, no further applications until we get this resolved.
Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up. So if Mr. Cook owned all of the houses on that piece of property, we wouldn't be in this because that's allowed under RAM?
And there was no property line. If, if you, if you have a single piece of property, a 35-acre parcel, you can have as many homes onto a 35-acre parcel as long as they're under single ownership. That's per our rules. We don't enforce covenants. Covenants are civil contract between neighbors. If there's a violation of covenants, that's a civil matter between them.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I closed the public hearing, so what is the feeling of the board? I did close it? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've moved to approve zoning change 20-2.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve zoning change 20-2. Other discussion? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, so is the only way to clean up what's out there right now to do this, and then deal with a bigger potential issue of a subdivision at a later date if it's brought forward? I mean, I, I feel like we ha, almost have, I'm being so frank today, we almost have to do this to clean it up. Am I wrong?
I've got a question then for staff. Could they do it with a variance, or we tried that?
So, a variance, you have to prove a hardship. So, the literal interpretation of the rules is creating a hardship that is preventing you from using your land the way your neighbors have. I think proving a hardship in this instance would be very difficult, especially how it was self, self-inflicted hardship. So I don't believe a variance would be a very good approach. To Commissioner Kaufman's comments, a zone change would, would correct it. Again, we're back to those criteria and whether you believe the applicant has, has met those criteria for a zone change. Planning and zoning said they did, staff believes they did, but a zone change would be a, a clean way to address this.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just see this as us having, having to clean up a backdoor move to subdivide his property. I don't like that at all, not at all. I can't, cannot support this motion.
Commissioner Kauf.
So I'm not sure who to ask this, but if, if you can't support the motion, and then we have something like that, that's outside of bounds on what the existing zoning is, what happens?
Uh-
Then you're just in, so they just won't sell their garage?
In limbo, kind of where it is now.
No, no future development would happen. The larger property there would maybe have to negotiate with the smaller property owner, purchase that property, combine them back together into a, a larger lot. Then that would remove the, the illegal subdivision, and then we could remove that notice.
Other question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Chadwick.
So, if we deny this, there, there is another avenue to solve the issue that, that the Cooks have.
Not considering ownership, or, I mean, just me being a development director, looking back, that, that is a potential way to solve it, yes, is for the larger property owner to purchase the smaller one, combine them back together, and then that would remove the obstruction, the notice.
Thank you.
So, let me get this straight. So, the larger one could buy out the smaller one, sell it all, give their portion of the money, doesn't, we don't care where the money goes, and then they could go do something else?
It would be a combined property, but it would be one 43-acre lot at that point.
Okay. Commissioner Bertollio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the solution that's being proposed would require the grandson, the grand, buy the grandmother out, combine it, and then he would be back here asking us to subdivide it again, so he could get his value back out of the house, which would bring us right back to the same discussion, unless the one house is removed. We didn't create this situation, but it's one we find ourselves in. I will reluctantly vote to approve the zone change. Nowhere in our criteria do we have an exception for denying based on having, being a bad neighbor. And the applicant, whether it's right or wrong, at this point, has brought forward a proposal that fixes the zone, zoning issues. There are 20-acre tracks to the north, whether they're spot or not, they do exist. This is not a very ideal situation for anybody to be put in, but I don't see how we're going to move this forward by either postponing or denying it. Thank you.
Other discussion? Commissioner Mill.
Mr. Chairman, just, just to inform you, like, what their attorney said, I am involved in this in a way, in the area. I'll probably be abstaining. So it's between the four of you, I have figured out probably.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, point of clarification, did, who is the second on the, the motion the second?
Oh, Jim was.
So, I, Mr. Chairman, if Commissioner Mill is going to abstain, I, I think that we would need to seek a-
So, we're going to need another second. If Commissioner Mill abstains from this vote, he casts the second, so we'll need a second to the motion to approve.
This one's really hard for me, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I will make the second, but I'm, I'm not, I'm so frustrated that we can get here and how things can go all the way down a road to this, and then we have to do this again and again. And I, I rarely get animated with the mic, but it's, it's so disappointing to be in this situation. So I hope that there's a way in the future that this won't happen again. I'm sure it will, but I'm enormously frustrated with where we are. So that's all, all included in my second.
Okay. Well, we have a, we have a second. I guess I've got another question. To the north of that, where RAM is, where the word RAM, or where those letters are, that was all formed by the sale of one piece of property, wasn't it? And, and when you look way back when, so all of the, the 20-acre partials, all of those, weren't they all on the edge?
On the edge of the-
On, well, on just not conforming to the, to the-
There was a number of lots out here that were pre-existing non-conforming. You know, we've heard about a 5-acre lot, we've heard about a 20-acre lot. Those are all underneath the 35-acre minimum for RAM, so those are pre-existing non-conforming or grandfathered lot sizes out there.
And that was in 77? When was that date?
I, I don't have that, that date.
Okay. I was just wondering when they got grandfathered in.
Our, our zoning resolution, I believe, was 2000, so it was, had to be pre-2000.
Oh, okay. It was pre-2000. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to, for zone change 20-2, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
And I will also vote no. So we're tied, that means it's denied, right? So we're tied. That means it's denied, right?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everyone, for testifying on that one. Okay, next we have a text amendment 20-2. Is there a report?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners TA 20-2, that's a proposal to amend the planning department fee schedule and application by the planning department. In 2010, the planning department amended the fee schedule and document prices to increase the fees associated with development. Again, the development department has been on a path of trying to break even when it comes to staff time so that development pays for development costs. And whether we're talking about subdivisions in the planning side in this instance or future on here when we get on building department fees. In 2013, the subdivision regulations were also amended, adding the reimbursement of county surveyor review into the, onto the applicant. Prior to that, in 2013, the county was paying for county surveyor services. So we changed that so that the applicant pays for it. Even with these changes, the department is still paying for development activities. Most recent example was the conditional use permit for Dyna Solar. We go through a background here on Dyna Solar. The CUP application was $300 for this applicant. We sent out adjacent letters, adjacent neighbor letters. Postage alone was $580. Our office supplies were estimated at $100. Legal notices, we had $102. We had estimated 10 hours of planning, planner and director time dedicated to open houses, phone calls, so another 750. We've estimated another 16 hours of planner research, writing presentations. Really, when we get down to the bottom line of this, the application applicant paid a fee of $300 and the department costs were $1,700, so there is a significant shortfall there. Actually, the department costs were 2,000, less than 300. That means we were operating in a deficit of nearly $1,800 for that one application. Now, I agree that is a larger application and required a little more time than most, but we can demonstrate this on nearly every application, given our past fee schedule. A typical CUP variance or zone change requires a minimum 14 hours of staff time to process. A major subdivision can be approximately 20 hours. These estimations do not include our phone or email exchanges, public comment, open houses, planning commission and board accounting commissioner meetings, vehicle and fuel costs associated with onsite review and site photos. All applications requiring public hearings must be published per the Casper Star Tribune, that state statute. An average legal cost is $96, postage being $10. Staff has reviewed the application fees of nine other counties surrounding the state, Natrona County being among the lowest fees associated with any of the above applications. Again, in your packet here, we've listed some of the surrounding counties, Sheridan Park, and we've got some comparisons in here of where we are versus where they are. An increase of fees associated with subdivisions, conditional use permits and zone changes, variances, zone changes and PUDs. The amendment also includes a fee change and road name and research fee. We get a lot of folks coming in and asking the planning office to do research on various pieces of property, and we do that research and that research is provided free of charge. So this fee schedule would then allow us to establish a fee schedule for property research that somebody could privately obtain through, say, a title company. The fees are provided in your packet. To date, there have been no public comments received on this amendment. At their September 8, 2020 meeting, the planning commission recommended approval of this agenda item to the board accounting commissioners. So without it answering any questions the commission may have.
Any questions for staff? Yeah, Commissioner Mill.
Jason, so taking the zone change that was just denied here tonight, he paid his money. Does he get a refund?
No, sir.
Okay. That was it?
Yeah. But then. The only, not to muddy your waters, but we've waived fees for conditional use permits required for chickens. If somebody comes in and wants chickens, we have waived the fee for that, so.
Any specific roosters in mind?
Long live Peaches.
What is that named?
Peaches.
Peaches, oh, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Well, now, we're still less than Casper. If I, even if we pass this, we're less than Casper.
We did not compare on the planning side the city of Casper's charges, but if we looked them up, my gut shot is yes, we would be less than Casper on the planning fees also.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You looked around at other counties, though, correct?
That's correct, and they're included in your packet, which counties? And I was looking for my staff report and.
And we're way below them, like Sheridan.
Yep, absolutely, yes. There are much, there are counties that are much higher than us, yes.
Okay, other questions? Yes.
Do you think it will change the dynamic of who applies to go through the process or irregardless of what, whatever the project is, they need it, they're just gonna do it? I mean, I don't think it will hesitate, I don't think people will hesitate, but I wonder if they will be more intentional.
I would agree with that. There has been instances where an applicant felt like the application fee was so minor that it was worth, quote unquote, "the roll of the dice." And so we would get not so thoughtful applications that hadn't been thought through. Perhaps this will make it more where they put the time and effort in to turn it into a good application, knowing that this is a non-refundable fee. Once you apply, this is, you're in it for the long haul.
Thank you.
Other question or more? Yep.
Eric, this would be probably for you. If we approve this, when would it go into effect?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Mill, I believe it would, unless we have an effective date in there, it would be effective immediately.
I didn't see anything, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I think it would be within the prerogative of the commission, should it choose to approve, to state an effective date in the resolution.
If I could offer anything on the building side, we have proposed a January 1 effective date, so after the 1st of the year. That gives folks that may have projects in the mill able to process those, and then starting January 1, we'd start it on the new fee schedule.
And all the contractors and everybody would be aware of it at that point and everything.
But anybody that, anybody that has one in the system now that's paid, is there?
Absolutely, yeah.
There in.
And remember, our schedule, you have to turn in 90 days before. We are, so actually, we're already, we're booking some that are further, further down the road, so we could make this effective as of January 1. If any applications come in from January 1 on, they would be in this new fee schedule.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, thank you. I'll open the public hearing for TA 20-2. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve TA 20-2.
What the date do you want on it? January 1?
When you sign it.
When I sign it, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't know if this is the point where I'd make a motion for amendment or not, but I think it'd be fair of us to give the contractors, the builders, the opportunity to move into that new schedule rather than just immediately jump into it. So if now's the time, and somebody correct me if not.
It's the time.
Okay, I'd make a motion to make an amendment for the effective date to be December 31st or January 1st. January 1, 2021.
Okay, is there a second to that? Is there a second to making it January 1st?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to have the effective date January 1st. Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carried, okay, or the amendment carries. Now back to the motion to approve TA 20-2. Other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carried. It's, effective date is January 1st. Okay, next we have a hearing about the adoption of the 2020 National Electric Code. Is there a report? It's Resolution 44-20.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, before us is the 2020 National Electric Code. If we go through the authority of Natrona County, it's, the state fire marshal's office delegates what we call home rule to Natrona County based on the qualifications of our staff and our abilities and what that allows us to do is we permit and inspect all electrical work. State essentially defers to Natrona County's management of this. Part of that agreement, however, is though that Natrona County would need to adopt the same electrical code that the state of Wyoming has adopted. So the state of Wyoming has adopted the 2020 Electrical Code, so now we are in a position where we need to adopt the 2020 Electrical Code to continue that agreement for home rule, if you will. So along with the National Electrical Code, staff also offered up some amendments to that National Electrical Code. And we're allowed to offer amendments that are more restrictive. That's totally permissible. And I'm paraphrasing here, but staff would offer that electrical disconnects, switch gears, panel boards not be allowed in bathrooms. Furthermore, more stringent requirements on service mast where we have overhead electrical services going into the building. Our thinking on that is when we have snow load and snow slides off of a building, it could damage a service mast, causing the customer to lose electricity. During the summer months, if we have a tree on the mountain that blows over on a power line, it could pull that service mast and potentially cause a fire. So staff believes that a more stringent requirements on a service mast is appropriate for us. And then we also are asking for increased protection from damage due to underground settlement on services. It's a J-box that we would put in line with the service feeder. If the ground of the building moved, that gave some slack, if you will, before it pulls on the service. Staff is recommending those amendments to the National Electrical Code. We did follow this up with, we had two public hearings at our contractors licensing appeals board that were advertised. We had two work sessions that were advertised, along with email notifications were sent out to our Natrona County contractors. The licensing board recommended approval of the 2020 National Electrical Code. However, they did not agree upon the amendments. So those are kind of the two key items before you tonight is adoption of the 2020 National Electrical Code, and then would you agree or disagree with the proposed amendments to the Electrical Code? So with that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have regarding the 2020 National Electrical Code.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Mill.
Yeah, Jason, when you had the two public hearings, was there any discussion about the additional?
Three items?
Yeah, three items that you all wanted. What was the feeling and?
So the consensus out of the contractors licensing board was that the 2020 National Electrical Code is a national code. And so if there was problems with service mast or bathrooms, that should be modified in the National Electrical Code, that they were not in favor of making modifications to the national code.
Right, but like public comment or anything like that?
Oh, excuse me. No, there was not any public comment. Contractors, realistically, the city of Casper is enforcing the 2020 National Electrical Code. If you go to Converse County or Fremont County, the state of Wyoming is enforcing the 2020 National Electrical Code. These new codes are really a matter of fact. If you are an electrical contractor, you know they're coming. You're forced to take continuing education to keep your license, so it's not been a shock to the public at all.
And is the city, does the city also have these three additions?
I believe they do have, and they have more, even more stringent requirements that we don't have.
Commissioner Bertollio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, are you aware of any of these situations actually occurring? Where service mast or the J-box would actually have made any difference?
Yes, we have had instances of service mast failing that were of lighter gauge piping material. It's typically due to a tree blowing over and it yanks on the service and then it snaps that mast off. I would defer to my electrical inspector on the bathrooms. I believe he had seen that in a bathroom. That's the reason why he put it in here. The slack in the J-boxes was actually a group effort by Natrona County, the city of Casper, and Rocky Mountain Power because they had a series of failures occurring locally here. And that was the outcome out of that meeting with that body is we should have these J-boxes to provide the slack.
Okay, I guess my, I can appreciate the latter too. The electrical disconnects, switch gear, panel boards, blah, 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 and bathrooms. I don't know, I don't think you'd ever see that in new construction anyway. But in old construction, I'm sure it's there. And if I were to go pull a building permit, would I have to bring it up to this code and move everything out of that bathroom to bring it up to code?
Not if you just pulled a building permit. If you pulled an electrical permit to rewire, to remove that electrical gear and put new in, we wouldn't allow the new to go back in the bathroom.
Okay, I'm just curious, because I had windows replaced in my house and the city required me to put smoke detectors in every bedroom, hardwire. See where the two had anything to do with each other, but that was, I'm just curious. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to have an unintended consequence on any of these things where somebody goes to do something and they end up having to fight the code because the code says this isn't code now, so.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Jason, kind of follow up to what Paul's, Commissioner Bertollio was saying. A lot of the manufactured homes, they've got the, those, the electrical boxes, lugs, whatever, in their washrooms. It may not be a bathroom, but it may be a mudroom, same thing. You got water. You have a lot of them where the panels are mounted to the same wall where just on the other side is a hot water heater. Again, water. I'm not seeing a difference between all that and the bathrooms versus if we do this, are we going to have an effect on mobile homes, on manufactured houses that are coming in?
We do see, Commissioner Mill, we do see modular homes that have a main breaker panel in a mudroom, so to speak, where we have a washer and a dryer, and.
And sinks and.
I hear your concern there, that the one distinction with the bathroom and those rooms is a bathroom would have a shower. And so we typically see a lot of humidity then and wet with a shower splashing of water in like a bathtub or a shower that we normally would not see in a washroom or a mudroom.
Okay, other questions? All right. There's all kinds of possibilities. Quit thinking about them. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Go. I did the last one. It's your turn.
I'd make a motion to adopt.
I'd make a motion to adopt the 2020 National Electrical Code, Resolution 44-20, in its base form, base code, without the additions to the staff's recommendations.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the National Electric Code only, not the three exceptions. Any discussion? Commissioner Kaufman.
I think the one I'm most interested in is the J-box piece, where Rocky Mountain Power got together with a lot of the agencies and it would really resolve some issues when homes settle. So that's probably the one that's giving me the most heartburn is if it's something that prevents people, or that would prevent people from losing power if it was just built that way in the first place, without having to dig out and figure out where that is, then that, I support that. So it's probably more of a comment than anything, but I don't know, I appreciate, I just do want to say I appreciate staff's work on this. I mean, I know you don't bring these forward just willy-nilly, and you've seen some things that we don't see, so I do appreciate your effort, however this goes. Thank you.
Other discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, of the three, I find really the electrical disconnects as being the same thing as having to pass an ordinance telling somebody, you don't have to walk, don't walk down the middle of the street. I don't think it's necessary, but so that one, I just kind of, I don't, I don't have a passion for it one way or another, but it's one where I don't know to what degree it really would make any difference. I don't think any builders today would put a the disconnect, switch gear, panel boards in a bathroom. The other two, I think there is some merit to. That's, that was my purpose in asking, it has happened. And I think it's of value to, you know, a few bucks upfront, probably save some serious headaches later on, so. Should somebody be willing to put an amendment forward, I would be supportive of those three.
If somebody, does somebody...
Somebody like Paul?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to amend the motion to include the three recommendations of staff for additional code requirements.
Second.
It's been moved, or amended, to include the three items. Any discussion on the amendment? You know, I would have little discussion. I worry about the bathroom deal, but most of those bathrooms in mobile homes are probably going to be underground. Hook up underground and come up.
Overhead.
Or in the washrooms. But when we talk about services on the mountain and trees falling down and that mountain is a third of it hadn't burned, boy, we want to do everything in our power to guard against that, so I'm in favor. Anyone else wishing to speak about the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment to add the three items that Jason put in to the code, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Now we're back on the motion to adopt the 2020 National Electric Code. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have the adoption of 2020 Building Department Fee Schedule, Resolution 45-20. Is there a report?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, the Development Department has been looking hard at the amount of resources we spend on a building permit versus what fees we generate in. And what we've found is there's a huge discrepancy between what we are bringing in versus what it's costing to do this. So that is putting then the burden or the shortfall onto other Natrona County funding sources. So in late 2019, early 2020, we began the process of looking at our fee schedule. We had not updated our fee schedule since 2005, 2006. So again, we went through two work sessions, two meetings with our Contractors Licensing and Appeals Board, looking at our fee schedule and comparing that to our neighbors here that we get compared to quite often, and that's the city of Casper. As we went through this, this process, we considered several different scenarios. During the meeting, the board brought forth a, I believe it was a 20% increase. Staff provided a 30 and a 45% increase. So you'll see in your packet was the 30% increase, and I said on your desk prior to the meeting, the 45 increase. So we went through our public hearings, we went through our public notice, and some of the feedback we got from the public was make it simple. Right now, our fee schedule is over 20 pages long, broken down by every $1,000 increment. There's an application fee, there's various other fees, and it's not very simple, and it takes some time to get through it. In fact, we just recently started a new permitting software that's used nationwide, and the software writers reported that our fee schedule was the most complicated one nationwide. So we want to make that simpler. So before you is a simple fee schedule that includes all of the fees. So it's as a tire company advertised, out-the-door pricing. You can see exactly if you have a $12,300 project, you can follow that across and see your fees. You'll see on these schedules I've given you is our proposed fee. The next column over is a current fee, and then on the far right is the city of Casper's fee. Also causing this conversation is customer service with our contractors. We are seeing such a strong building activity in Natrona County, even through the COVID. We were quite busy all the way through there, and at some points, our response time was getting to five days out. We were a week out when somebody called for an inspection, while our neighbors to the city of Casper can respond within hours. And so that pointed out a deficiency in our department, and really, we need, we need better funding so that we can support our contractors. And our contractors need to, they want to pay for the needed activities, and they want an increase in customer service. So staff presented this to the Licensing Appeals Board. They recommended approval of the 30% fee schedule in front of you. However, it's up to your discretion to modify that as you see fit. With that, I'd answer any questions the Commission may have.
Any questions for staff? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? I'll close the public hearing, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution 45-20, adopting the 2020 Building Department Fee Schedule.
Mr. Chairman, I would second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the fee schedule provided by the Building Department. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Mill.
I know we passed Jason's question-answer part, I just saw this kind of look, comparing the two schedules. Once you get past $98,000, it's the base fee for the 92, or $98,000, plus then additional $924 for each thousand on both. Did you mean to do that? Because then the $924 on the 45% isn't, that doesn't work out, right? If you increase that by 35 versus, or 30 versus 45?
I did not mean to do that, Commissioner Mill. I guess my first question is which fee schedule are we proposing? The...
You see what I'm...
I do see what you headed, I'm trying, so if we go with the one I provided before the meeting with the 45%, we would, that $924, let me modify that here, see if I can...
616.
I'm going to go. So we'd go another 15% on the $924, right?
Yeah, a third of it, two-thirds of it.
No, we're increasing.
You're increasing it, or?
Increase.
So that'd be $10.26...
Yeah.
Or, excuse me, $10.62 per thousand on the, on the higher one? If I did my math correctly.
Instead of the nine that he had for the three.
So for anything above $98,000, it'd be an additional 10.62 per thousand?
Yes.
On top of that base.
On top of that.
On top of the $973.
Base of $973.
Yeah.
Okay, other discussion? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, so...
Commissioner Brutolio.
So this $924 is based on a 30% increase?
That was a, yeah, a 30%, and so if we go with the 45 proposal, we would increase it to the 10.62.
Wouldn't it be 50% increase? Go from 30 to 45, it's a... I don't know what ratio you're working off of, but it's...
What was, what's the original, what are you basing the $924 off of?
The $924 would have been a 30%...
Increase from what?
30% increase over our base, our fee currently. And so if we're going to go to the 45, I took another 15% on that $924 to get to my 10.62.
I did, the $924, I'm just, if you're going to increase it from 30 to 45%, it's a 50% increase and not a...
Mr. Chairman, so if I'm understanding this correctly, so the $924 is an all increase? If that represents a 30% increase over the base, then the base would be two-thirds approximately that?
Okay.
Which would put it at like six-something, which 15% on that, then would put us at the 10-something.
What's the current one now?
It's not a flat fee, it's buried in a 20-page.
So you're trying to simplify what you're going with, okay.
So the motion then, if I understand it, we'd go a 45% increase, and then whatever that fee ended up being per thousand?
If we go with the 45, no, the 30.
And the 45 is here?
I believe the motion recommended by staff was the 30%, and that's my question.
Yeah.
Is why? Could you, could you please explain why you went with a 30% and not a 45%?
So staff had looked at our shortcoming, if you will, our shortfall between permits, fees generated versus expenditures based upon our current staff and our current situation. So a 30% increase would, would bring us to a break-even point with no increase in response time, no, that five-day lag could still exist with a 30% increase. The advantage to the 45 is that would give some extra cushion to be able to hire more staff to be able to respond to contractors' needs.
So did the fact that if you went with the 45, that's pretty darn close to 50%? Did the fact that that would be a fairly big shock, did that ever enter into your thinking?
It did. What we are currently experiencing is we are so inexpensive compared to the city. Contractors are used to going and spending the city's 2018 fee schedule that even at the 45% increase, we are less than the city of Casper's 2018 fee schedule. And so that was, that was discussed with Contractors Licensing Board, and you know, they want us to visit this more frequently. And I think we all agree here, we should be visiting this more frequently rather than every, every 15 years. We should look at it with every code adoption perhaps. But that, that did cross our mind, and ultimately, we are less than the city of Casper, so the contractors are frankly used to paying it.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioner Mill, your motion is for the 30%?
I don't think I made a motion, I was just...
Nobody's made a motion.
Yeah, I was just trying to clarify this.
Okay. Okay, I thought somebody did. So is that for the 30 or the 45?
It was as presented by staff.
Yeah, which was the 30.
Which was the 30.
Okay. So right now, it's the 30.
One more thing. This in no way, this 30%, if we approve this, this in no way precludes the county from three years, five years down the road doing another 10, another 20. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to do the fee increase, it amounts to 30%. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Okay, next we have one more public hearing. This one is all of... No, no, we don't, yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing for the adoption of 2017 National Electric Code, Resolution 46-20. Is there a report from staff?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman, so in the electrical world, we have work that is governed by the National Electrical Code, which we just previously adopted and spoke about. And then there is a code in the world called the National Electrical Safety Code. And this would be for the, this would manage privately-owned distribution systems. So we're talking about distribution systems not owned by Rocky Mountain Power. There are distribution systems that are exempt by state statute, you know, including some oil, gas installations, railroads, some of those things are exempt. Staff is increasingly seeing more and more instances where privately-owned distribution systems are being installed. So some examples of that is a gravel pit north here of town where Rocky Mountain Power had a stop point, and then the private person built the power line or the distribution system from that point on into their facility. We're also seeing some high-end industrial applications in the county in excess of 10,000-volt services being put in for different electrical motor testing and operation. And as we get into, and I guess another example would be our utility-scale solar installations. So whenever we have a utility-scale solar installation, they're going to have solar panels, they're going to have their own distribution system where they're harnessing that, and then there's a demarcation point at some point where they're going to sell that power back to Rocky Mountain Power. Currently, those privately-owned systems are not being regulated, and we are seeing a serious safety concern where we're not able to intervene and be able to impose a code and say, this is what we need to do for the safety of all. And during the work session, I showed some videos of arc flash. Arc flash is essentially where the power jumps, if you will, it flashes from the power source to a person. It can cause serious bodily injury, if not death. And so we are seeing instances where switch gear and distribution systems are being put in that are not regulated. So staff would propose that we adopt this code so that we can ensure safe installation in some of these, in all of these locations. This is not a code that is going to be widely used. Realistically, the department sees this three or four times a year. be widely used. Realistically, the department sees this three or four times a year. This would not cause any unnecessary or additional regulations to the average Natrona County resident. It would not affect the gas and oil industry out in the, in the field. It would not affect anybody except our solar installations and our high-end industrial distribution systems that we're now seeing more and more of. You know, Casper is a hub for the gas and oil industry, so we do see a lot of service occurring on large-scale electrical motors and just out of, out of the norm type installations. Again, this was the same as the others. We did have two public hearings. We had work sessions. We advertised that. The Contractors License and Appeals Board did not recommend approval. They voted denial of adopting this code. The comments given were they work in the code and did not want to be regulated. Staff would offer that we should adopt this code so that we can regulate these installations to ensure it's safe. Where these motor installations that I spoke of are in occupied buildings with a lot of workers around them, potentially some untrained workers around there. So we wanna be able to make sure they're put in a safe manner to protect those folks. You know, the gravel, the gravel pit, yeah, it's not very accessed by the public, but we wanna make sure those installations are correct. The solar farms, those are, are gonna be private, privately maintained, but we wanna make sure those meet these, these codes. So the solar farm would then be required to come in and get a permit from us, and we would review their plans and inspect their installation. As a side note, we did bring that up to Dynasolar when they came in. That was a finding of fact in the resolution that they needed to design it per this, so that would not be a, a new item for them. So with that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Commissioner Bertollio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jason, does this cover wind turbines?
It would cover their distribution system up to that, that point in demarcation.
So the, so you obviously have the large ones that are providing power back into the main grid system, but I'm thinking of, of some of these larger ones that are going up that can handle individual homes. I don't know to what degree the power requirements are, or what they create, let alone battery storage. Is that covered in this, or is it covered in any of our existing codes?
So a residential home is, does not reach the level of this. They do not generate the power to get to this code. They are covered under the National Electrical Code that we have, have already, have always used and enforced. So we're covered on the private side. This is really high-end, folks, industrial and high, high, high voltages.
So if the, the large wind turbines, the megawatt ones, that generate the power, that still have to get it to Rocky Mountain Power, would that be covered under this, or would that be?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the only exemption I can see to it is utilities are exempt. So if Rocky Mountain Power happened to own that wind turbine farm, they would be exempt.
Okay, so like the West Winds where there's Cedar Hills, whichever one it was, where there's one private and one Rocky Mountain. Rocky Mountain would be exempt from it, but the private one, providing the power until it reaches Rocky Mountain's transmission system, they would be subject to this code?
I believe so, yes.
If it was in Natrona County?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Milne.
So Jason, the, this National Electric Safety Code, is it similar to API and the different codes and standards and whatnot that are out there for different industries?
Yes.
Is this a voluntary code? Has the state incorporated it into any of its?
The state of Wyoming has not incorporated this. This would be something we were able to do. They have not incorporated this. This, this would be the code that Rocky Mountain Power would refer to as a standard when they're developing their codes.
Right. And so we're looking at, at regulating one particular industry using a voluntary code that they should be developing their own standards off of, their own safety policies? Those industries that are, that would need this?
So the industries that are in, in this are part of this code. They do, yeah, they voluntarily.
They can voluntarily use those or develop their own?
Right.
Okay. And, and so those, those, like for the motors, for, for the transmission tower lines or whatever, for the, for the gravel, they're putting those in, using their own policies, whether or not they're using this, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
I don't think anybody wants to kill anybody or anything. Why, and, and if something does happen, then OSHA's gonna come in. Why, as a county, do we need to regulate and oversee their safety policies?
So everybody, at the end of the day, a lot of us are governed by the, the price of something or the, the, the cost of installation. And we have seen instances where things are being installed not per this code. And it's really the welfare of, of Natrona County residents that are working around these facilities that we're concerned with. And so we wanna protect those folks that may not be aware of these risks. We could have an untrained worker near some of the switchgear that is, that doesn't have the proper working clearances. So we wanna protect those folks through this code to make sure those installations are, are there. We could have a fireman going out on a solar farm where we have a grass fire, and if, if it's not put in per this code, we could potentially be endangering those first responders as they go out there in, into that area. So I would, I would offer that we should be regulating that to make sure that they're following this code, that they have, could, could have participated in the development of it.
So do we regulate the pressures on pipelines and the welds on pipelines and thread depth on with, if we did regulate oil field?
And no. So those are, those are all exempted per state statute. So no, we, we're not involved with those.
So we're just, we're still isolating one industry, basically, and, and looking at that?
We're looking at the electrical industry in this case, yes.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Other question? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Yes, sir?
Yeah. Well.
Give you, come on up.
I'm coming.
Give your full name and address.
Sean O'Brien, Casper, Wyoming. You, you state all these places. I, I'd love to see where you've seen these instances within this county. I've worked in this county for seventeen years, don't work anymore. Know all kinds of safety individuals, all kinds of motors, all kinds of high power. We don't even have high power compared to other places in, in Natrona County that high. So I'd really like to see these before you wanna take one section and say, oh, we're gonna regulate you by this, when the state's not doing it. I mean, it seems like we're, basically what he was saying, we're jumping off into something that we don't need. It's deep, and it's gonna be very complex. And by the time you get it out to these people that say, well, you're gonna build your little distribution box over here, you gotta follow this, till it gets to Rocky Mountain Power. But Rocky Mountain Power is exempt because they're big bucks. That's the bottom line. So it's not a matter of how much you're gonna spend, it's whose money you're gonna spend. That's all I got on me.
Thank you. Any questions?
I, I can give you the specific examples.
Okay.
It's Flanders Electric right here on Salt Creek Highway, near the intersection of Renana and Salt Creek Highway. The gravel pit is the, what they refer to as the Wardwell Pit at the intersection of I-25 and West Winds Boulevard. This, Natrona County also owns a distribution system at our fairgrounds. Those transformers and that power lines in there are all privately owned. And so those are all operated by a local contractor named Steve Toops, and we routinely use him, and we're always calling Steve to get some feedback, and he, he references that code. So we do have instances of it in, in Natrona County that, that Flanders Electric deal is, is in excess of ten thousand. I wanna say it's twelve thousand volt service going into that building. So we do have examples of it in Natrona County.
Okay. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I, I believe that I heard you say earlier today that there were a couple of examples of where this was lacking, and there are a couple of people that got severely injured.
Yeah.
Could you relate that to us?
You bet. We have a, a staff member that's aware of two people in our community, one in Edgerton Midwest and one in Riverton, that lost the use of their arms because the separation between some lines was not proper, and through their act, maintenance activities, they, they get, it's an electrocution, and then they, in this instance, have lost their arms over, over the situation. Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Just, just for point of fact, on the one up in Midwest, it was a power line, and it was working for the oil field, so.
It was exempted.
Okay. Other questions? All right. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution forty-six dash twenty.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Commissioner Milne.
I don't see where we, we're shorthanded with the inspection right now. I don't know if this is a big, and the elephant we wanna take a bite of, there's a lot of transformers in a lot of industrial buildings, six hundred volts plus, which would be covered under that. I don't know if we have the manpower. I don't know if we even wanna take this, this on due to the fact that it's voluntary code. Companies are, are required to be training their employees on the, on their environment that they're gonna be working in. I just, I don't think this is something that we need as a county to be taking on personally.
Other discussion? Been moved and seconded to adopt this two thousand and seventeen electric code. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay. We went through that list. It only took. Okay, next is public comment. Mr. Nakbar, come on up.
Thank you.
Please keep it three to five minutes if you can.
Keith Nakbar, Attorney at Law, 123 West First Street, Suite 205, Casper, Wyoming, eight two six oh one. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to raise a procedural issue regarding the matter that I was here on earlier, which was zone change twenty dash two. It is my understanding, based on prior practice, that the chairman of the commission only casts a vote when there is a tie. And in this situation, my understanding, based on my observation, was that Commissioner Bertolio voted in favor, Commissioner Kaufman voted in favor, Commissioner Chadwick voted against, which at that point would have, Commissioner Milne abstained, which would have made it two in favor, one against. And in that situation, I thought I heard Mr. Chairman say that, at this point, I need to vote, and that created a tie. And so it seems to me that, based on prior practice, if the chairman does not vote, unless there's a tie, there wasn't a tie, and the chairman voted. And so it seems to me that the, the resolution or the zone change would have more properly passed.
Just to answer that, and maybe staff can help me, but I've always voted, no matter what the, what the resolution or, or motion was, I usually vote, one way or the other. So I don't think that it, it's any different than any other time.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, there, there are no rules of procedure in Natrona County that I'm aware of that would preclude you from voting. I think as a matter of course, you're correct. It's been my experience that the chair has voted. So I, I know on some boards they do have, have adopted rules that would require a tie, but I am unaware of any such rules that govern this body.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Elia Scott, Attorney at Law, 159 North Walcott, Suite 400, Casper, Wyoming, eight two six oh one. I represent the Wardwell Water and Sewer District, oh, sorry. I represent the Wardwell Water and Sewer District, and I am here to ask a question about the status of a grant application that I mailed to you all and, and the Road and Bridge organization back in the middle of August. Looks like August fourteenth was the date that I mailed it. I have been in communication with Mike Hegler. He identified that you had all discussed it, and that it was potentially going to be on tonight's agenda. I reviewed the agenda but didn't see it, but that I would come and see if there's any update on any status.
Yeah, we're all looking at, at staff.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so apparently it did come through in the crush of things. I don't recall it off the top of my head. So if, I, I can double check. We can certainly get that on the next agenda if we've got it. But yeah, it, it, yeah, I, I, well, you can give it to me, but it hasn't been approved, so we couldn't get, get it on until.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
Okay, yeah. So, so yeah, we'll, we'll chase it down.
Okay. Good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, is this?
This was for twenty-five thousand for the roads?
This is for, yeah, this is for the Blair Lane Service and Building District.
Oh, that one. Okay, yeah.
Now.
Yeah.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I had actually sent that to Mike, and we've had Hegler at Road and Bridge, and we had a couple of discussions about that. I think we're gonna move it forward.
Okay.
It'll probably be on the next agenda. When you said grant, I was thinking like to the state or something like that, yeah.
Yeah, I was too.
Well, it's technically.
Yeah, the road deal.
But it's a weird title.
Yeah, no, no, that, that, that's, that's not gonna be a problem. We just talked about because it, the total amount exceeded the one-time, you know, ability that we would have to spread it out. But yeah, it, it shouldn't be a problem.
Great. Well, if there's any questions, my information is on the cover sheet, and I welcome any questions or comments. So thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Keith Rolland, 542 South Durbin Street. A couple of points. First of all, I'm glad we finally sold the hospital. I was trying to get that sold for the last fourteen years, and they always were very much against it, and every time I proposed it, they'd be like, no, 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 no. The only problem I do have is the procedure. I wish we would have had a stalking horse bid, referred to, for the parties that bought it, the organization that bought it, and have them as a stalking horse bid, and then open it up for potential auction to sell that hospital. Maybe nobody else would have been interested in it, but at least it would have been some transparency to see if we got the highest price. Because a friend of mine, when I suggested it fourteen years ago, did have a price in mind. I can't tell you what it is, it was confidential. He wanted to buy the hospital, but nobody wanted to sell it to him. The second thing is, I've had a little bit of problem with the library. I'm trying to get the library to stop subscribing to the New York Times. When I lived in New York, I always got the Times, every time at night. It is no longer a newspaper, it's just a Democratic blog. I don't know if you're familiar with the fact, a couple of weeks ago, they fired the number three person at the Times who was in charge of the editorial page solely because he had Senator Cotton's letter to the editor be published. They didn't publish a rebuttal to it, you know, like the Times forty years ago would publish his letter, then a rebuttal to it, and whatever. Now, they actually fired him. They do not allow anything that they do not agree with be published. And this includes food reviews, movie reviews. Everything now is very democratic or politically correct. We do not need to pay for a blog, a Democratic blog from taxpayers' money. For whatever reason, all the libraries, including ours here, think they have to have the New York Times. Yes, forty years ago, maybe that would be correct, but not today. We need to have a, we're discussion with the library, saying, we, as the commission, representing the public, prefer that you not, we can't really instruct them not. representing the public, prefer that you not, we can't really instruct them not to get it, we prefer that you would not subscribe and pay taxpayers' money towards the Times. And the problem with this is also, you're giving them money to the Times, but you're also giving them ad revenue, because when they have a, a paper at a library, they can charge more for their advertisement, than if, let's say if I subscribe to it, it's only one person. For a library, they had a lot more money coming in for revenue. The third thing I wanna talk about, real quick, is, we don't wanna be smug, but we've been very successful with containing the coronavirus. We have for, the, the county, only two people have died, I, I don't wanna, you know, say only, I mean, two people clearly have died, that's not, that's not positive, but the point is, our, um, death rate per hundred thousand, which is usually are using, is two-point-five deaths per hundred thousand. The state, right now, is at about seven-point-three per hundred thousand. The city of New York, the city of New York, is two-hundred-and-eighty-five deaths per hundred thousand. The reason why I'm here is, people are trying to say that we, the Democrats, or whoever's gonna take over, needs to, we need to adopt their programs. Clearly, what we're doing is right, you know, mandatory wearing the mask, mandatory this, you know, putting people into quarantine for fourteen days, that isn't work, because what happens is you contaminate the whole household. So one person's there, the other four people in the house also get it then by quarantine. I mean, clearly, whatever they're doing is wrong. We need, at this point, to come up with the idea that, if they pass this, we're gonna be like a sanctuary county, so to speak, that we may not enforce this. And I see the, uh, Mr. Chairman is wearing a mask, I do not think that mask is a good idea. My best friend is a pathologist in New York, he is adamantly against wearing masks for the people in public. The trouble is, they're saying masks are good at a hospital, but he takes off his mask fourteen, fifteen, twenty times per day, he disposes the mask, they don't reuse the mask. And here, people are wearing the same mask all day long, they're wearing, yours just died, you're breathing in dye with the black one, and if you wash it, you're breathing in chemicals from the washing material, that wasn't made to be breathed in, and some people wore white ones, and they bleached them. People sneeze and cough into the mask, this is the number-one problem, they cough and sneeze into the mask, it goes onto the air, the air's there, then you walk by with a mask, you absorb it. If you did not wear masks, you would not be absorbing that into your body, and it stays there. That's why many, many doctors are adamantly against wearing masks, and I think we have to make sure that we do not go up where the federal government says, if you go out in public, in other words, if you walk your door, you wear a mask. I think we have to adopt a program, what we're doing right now works, clearly, you look at our numbers, you know, two-point-five deaths per hundred thousand, and they have two-hundred-and-seventy-five deaths per hundred thousand, clearly, they're doing some, rather, two-hundred-and-eighty-five deaths per hundred thousand, clearly, they're doing something wrong. So I think we need to develop a program right now, that we will be pushing back against that proposal, so that they were, whether you wear masks, or quarantine, or whatever. Anything else? Any questions?
Okay. Any question? I will tell you that the reason I'm wearing the mask, is this snowstorm last week, we were gathering cattle, and I got a cold, so I'm protecting my others' friends here from myself.
So, you're protecting, basically, from a cold, not so much from COVID-nineteen type of thing?
Exactly.
Okay.
And then, as far as the New York Times, I'll answer that one, too. You know, I agree with you, but I'm not gonna tell the library they can't get New York Times, 'cause somebody out there, there are some Democrats in the county, and they might want a word.
I heard there was two.
Look at the New York Times.
Besides Terry, there's one more, right?
Well, Terry left, so I, I noticed right when you came up to talk, Terry left, so I don't know what that was all about, but.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, you know, just a, a further comment, you know, on, on the New York Times, I, I think it's, it's okay for them to have it, so we can avail ourselves of what's out there. We need to know what's being said, so we know to take this stance. If we don't know it, we can't stand up against it.
But, but the problem is, we're also paying, we're paying, see, the New York Times, the Salzberg's there, they know they can do whatever they want, 'cause I know a lot of people that worked for the Times, and they, they, they even themselves are also liberals, it used to be, you know, you disagreed, you know, have liberal friends, we disagree, but now, you cannot even disagree with the New York Times, you have to be careful what you say, or you will be fired.
Yeah.
And that's the problem, is, it's no longer what you perceive as the fact that we're getting different information, many of it is total lies, is totally incorrect, it's a blog. How many times do they say that the, the Trump family, according to sources, were, were before a grand jury, gonna be indicted, and it turned out to be not to be true? I, I think if we're gonna get a fin, an, an international paper, or anything else, I would suggest the Financial Times. You know, they're a very liberal paper, and they give different things. I would suggest the Financial Times replace in the New York Times, they're much better quality, ten times better quality. I mean, they have liberal editorial pages, but, you know, we know that, but they will give points of view that are accurate, whereas the New York Times, they could care less, it's a propaganda sheet. The Financial Times is not a propaganda sheet, well, yet. I subscribe to both, pardon me, that's okay.
Okay.
Well, because I, well, I have to get them, because I write for Bloomberg, I retired, but I write for Bloomberg.
All right, thank you. Yeah, New York Times wasn't all bad, I was in it twice. Huh? Mr. O'Brien.
I've been to the Times many times.
There you go. Okay. Mr. O'Brien, come on up.
How we doing today, gentlemen? I'd like to know how I get up here before all this other stuff has to go on.
Oh, okay.
What do I gotta do to get on the agenda first?
Well, public comment is at the end, I'm sorry.
Well, okay, so, I'm here 'cause I'm wondering where we are.
About your homeowners association?
Oh, no, that's not a homeowner, it's an improvement district.
Okay.
It's the very first improvement district, go to the state of Wyoming, that's mismanaged by the county and the state. I've been now coming here for over six years, and now I'm at the end of the rope. Last time we hung our heads, said we didn't do nothing 'cause of COVID. Where are we at today? Same thing? Yeah, so, go Natrona County, and we waste time on all this other stuff. And this is a, this is a problem, gentlemen, going on, so I will, I will, at this point, seek legal counsel to sue the, the county, I guess.
Okay.
Well, I mean, you, you've left no option, so I want it on record. So, the things I'm still waiting for from you is, uh, the rock you donated for Gas Hills Road, I'm still waiting for all that paperwork, we've never seen it, we've, we've been arguing...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
No, 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 no. Not whoa, 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 listen, I asked you about the Gas Hills Road a long time ago, you guys brushed me off, so we're gonna start from day one, you could go back through your notes, 'cause we've been through them, in the county commission, we're still looking for the paperwork where you donated the rock for that road, where the county accepted the rock for that road.
On Gas Hills Road?
Is that the name of that road? Yeah, the one you donated all the rock for, it's what you stole.
I did not donate any rock for Gas Hills Road.
So, Mr. Attorney, you're no better than the last one. Man, you're no better. You released the tax money one more time, it's got to be criminal at that point.
It's got...
Because there is a problem, and we're fully aware of it, they were aware of it when we were upstairs, you were still here, none of these other people were here, you were there, you may have been here, and we met in a little room upstairs, two ladies opposed it, said, oh, we got a major problem here, then we've been all the way down to Rene Vito, wow, we have no checks and balances. How many years now? You said last time, you said the first time, and I said, you show me. You showed me.
I'll tell you what, the best thing is, go ahead and get that attorney, and have...
Yeah, but the best thing is, I'm gonna be here every week going over the same thing, every, I'll be at every meeting from now on.
Okay.
And I will do whatever I gotta do, but I'm not spending my money to come after you for not doing your jobs to begin with.
You are...
There you go.
You're part of an improvement district out there, and, and they have a board...
That is governed by the county and the state.
It's governed by the board.
No, there is no board.
Well...
There is no money, where's the money? Where's this guy at?
Okay.
That's, here's the problem.
That's, you have to have an attorney find out.
You released the tax money to a gentleman, who, no, you released the tax money, it goes into this account, this one guy who can't control the account, is the only one that's ever controlled the account.
Okay.
Where's the account? He resigned, we can't have an election, we're waiting on you, the county. We need a board, we can't do anything without the county and the elections, right? Where, where, where do you want us to get it from? I don't know these addresses, I don't know anything, they said, oh, yeah, Jeff didn't do an election, call Cheyenne, Cheyenne says, oh, well, the county's doing it, and the county says, oh, the state's doing it, here we go again. Why don't you pay for my attorney to figure out why you guys can't figure out what the solution is? Yeah, I'm, I'm tired, I'm hot-headed, I'm gonna die before we get this done, you realize that? That's how I feel.
Okay.
You've been here the longest, and you've known about it, you've been here before, under Rene, so I'm not pointing you out, but that tax money still goes out, because he turns in a bill, a bill for what? Come look at my roads, I've been there seventeen years, I maintain part of the road, another guy maintains the road, it ain't coming out of our tax money, it's coming out of our pockets.
Have you talked to, uh, Tony?
Talked to who?
Tony Kaiser?
Who's that?
Drake's, uh, Drake's...
Tony who?
Drake's Construction, Tony Kaiser.
Don't even know him, why would I talk to him?
He lives on your street.
Is that Tony's last name?
That's Tony's last, he's got a bunch of equipment.
Tony Count. Tony Count. I don't know, I don't know who you're talking about.
Okay.
He doesn't live on my road.
He lives down there.
Well, he doesn't live on Forum.
Well, he lives in that improvement district.
I have no idea who he is.
Okay.
Why would I talk to him?
You need to talk to your neighbors to get it fixed.
I, I've talked to, you got the Jeff Moratory side, and you got the opposition side, that's how it's been, since before Frank Moratory died, okay? So Jeff's been running this like a king, like I've been saying, writing checks, doing whatever he wants, there's no board. You guys asked me, is it, eh, do you think there's something illegal going on here? And I said, I think that's your decision, and I think we'd refer that to this man, because this is an improvement district, governed by the state of Wyoming, overseen by the county. What do you want me to do? I'm one guy who's saying, where'd our equipment go, where's our money, and how is this guy still calling shots when he resigned? There's no board, we can't get an election, you can shove this under the carpet as long as you want, I'm gonna be here every week.
Okay.
I'm gonna start, and I'm gonna start back there, and I'm gonna start before all the other stuff, and I guess you'll throw me out, and I'll come back the next week.
Okay, well, public comment is at the end.
What?
Public comment is at the end.
Yeah, well, mine'll be at the beginning, 'cause I'm tired of it.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing gets done.
Thank you. Commissioners' comments.
No, 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 thank you. We got it on record, that you guys aren't doing it right, that's good.
Okay.
Holy shit, don't ever come to my property for nothing.
Commissioner comment?
What are you saying? Speaking with me, or...
Any, any, anybody?
I guess I can go.
Commissioner Milne?
I'll do it. I'll go. Lots of bull.
Ah, is that deal up there, yeah?
Yeah. Um, first everybody...
Your mic's not on. Thank you.
She can't hear.
The, um, pretty much everybody knows about the, the house fire and, and the mountains side starting up, and I'd just like to thank my county fire, and, and all the other agencies, I mean, they're down from Midwest, they're all over state and everybody, and everybody pulled together and got it knocked down real quick, and so, I'd like to thank them. Um, I'd also like to thank Jason and his staff, for the, how long did we spend tonight? All the resolutions and everything, including the one that I voted against, you guys put in a lot of work, and I do appreciate it, and a lot of time and effort with all of it, and, and I think it's all good, I do appreciate it. And then, just the last comment, it's kinda more of a personal, um, observation, personal thing for me, for a comment, really doesn't affect this, uh, this community too much, but, but, that, uh, that deputy down in LA that got shot in the face, and then saved her partner, turned and moved him off the X, that's one tough little cookie right there, and, uh, God bless you for, for stepping up and putting yourself out there like that, and being a cop down there, I, I couldn't do it down there, but, uh, I'm glad to see they're, they're both doing okay, so, that's all I got.
Okay. Commissioner Bertollio, talk to that one.
Well, I'll, I'll tail on that one, shame on every single person that doesn't stand up for him. The city manager there should've been fired on the spot, for what he said about it, and every single individual that can't stand up now and say this was one of the most disgusting, horrendous things I've ever seen done to, uh, people that are there to protect us, should be, should be more than ashamed, I, I can't even begin to... My disgust is beyond belief, so, thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman.
So, I would, I would say the same, I feel like, so, yes, thank you to the staff who was there on the fire, I feel like we got really lucky, and we had the right people at the right time, and the conditions really worked out for us, so I'm very grateful, but to all the staff, I mean, it's amazing to me, when people come to us and they have one acute problem, it's amazing how many things we touch, and I think people just have their areas of interest and focus, but county-wide, we're taking on so many things, and the staff is stepping up, and we're, there's just a lot of moving parts, and we do move slow on some things, because there's so many things to move through, but I am very grateful to the people who helped propel this county forward, so thank you. Uh, I, I have some lighter, interesting news to share quickly, we had a Parks Board meeting last week, it was very productive, so we had people present potentially a five-year plan, we've pulled groups together to say, how do we move this forward? I think there's a way we can collaborate and communicate better than we have in the past, so, I feel like that's progress, we've done a lot of great things on that mountain in the last twelve months, where it's Ponderosa, the well, the bear trap shelters, we've got Nordic going, we've just approved the contract on the Bridle Trail a few months ago, like, there is progress, it feels slow, but things are happening, so, grateful to the people participating, and also to this board for pushing some things forward, so, thank you.
Commissioner Chadwick.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Well, I would echo what you guys said, and, and to see those protesters bouncing around out there with a flag, and it just, boy, only in this country could you get away with that, and it, and they turned it into such a political deal, that, I think the president oughta go in and clean it up, but man, he's just damned if he does and damned if he doesn't, and it's really too bad, really sad, but...
Mr. Chairman, I might interject, not in this country, maybe in California, but not in Wyoming.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, well, it's happened in a lot of places, unfortunately, this unrest is really bad.
Mr. Chairman?
I hope it never happens here, and we're gonna be behind whoever puts them down.